Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 Tom Water City Council meeting. We will start off with rule call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
She's excused.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Sforthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I'm present. Join me for our salute tour flag. All right, we have a couple of special items. The very first special item is the introduction of Sergeant Brent Baker. So I will turn it over to our police chief.
Mayor, council members, Brent. So Sergeant Baker is the first sergeant promotion we've had in several years. We're really excited. And one of the things that Deputy Chief Keelis and I wanted to make a point of is trying to get them in front of you so you could understand who they are and know a little bit about their background, start building up some of the relationships again that we've kind of lost over COVID and just as the organization's grown. So I'll introduce Brent and then I'll let him introduce his family to you. So Sergeant Brent Baker, he came to us from Redmond PD with seven years of experience. And before that, he has some of the most interesting work experience of anyone I've ever come across. So and it gives him a good background for doing the job that he's doing right now. He was hired by Tom Water PD in 2016. In that time, he's worked patrol. He's been a major crimes detective. He's been a field training officer. He's a less lethal instructor. He's a patrol tactics instructor. And he's also been an acting sergeant before he was promoted to full sergeant. In his time with us, he has 15 individual commendations, including a commendation for preventing an individual from jumping, literally jumping off a bridge and saving her life. So Brent is highly decorated. The other thing about Sergeant Baker is he's also probably one of the smartest people in our organization. And I know that if there's a problem or an issue that myself or Deputy Keelis can go to him, give him the problem, and he'll take care of it. So I want to introduce Sergeant Brent Baker.
Brent, will you introduce your family?
Yeah. So this is my dad, Brian Baker. He had practiced law in Lewis County and Thurston County, 20 years in Lewis County, 20 years up here in Thurston County. He's prosecuting attorney for Lewis County for, I think it was three years, right, or six? Four. Yeah. And then this is my mom, and she's obviously been my mom for 51 years, and she's been amazing. And a lot of the gifts that I have have been from her. I really appreciate her. And then this is my sister Brooke, and she's got four kids. She lives in Duval right now, and she just started a job at Green Hill, working with our youth that we commonly have contact with.
So I want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
And that's very much an honor. And I want to present you with a pin. Yes.
That's excellent.
And I think maybe you could give one to each one of your family members.
I will.
Yes, because coming from a law enforcement family, I can tell you, family, it's a lot. That support takes a lot. So I really appreciate the job you do, and thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Great. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation for GIS Day, and Councilmember Sforthout will be reading the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the city of Tom Water recognizes that an understanding, use, and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the general public throughout the South Puget Sound region. And whereas geographic information systems, GIS, technology also allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to more intelligently respond. And whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training to use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential. And whereas the city of Tom Water acknowledges that those that have chosen GIS as their profession or as part of their discipline to improve their lives of our residents. And whereas to recognize and support the efforts of partners who work on activities to improve environmental sustainability, human services, and various humanitarian efforts to better our world. And whereas having a day of GIS activities open to staff, government leaders, and the community will help promote spatial thinking and a better understanding of the use of these decision-making tools. And whereas the city of Tom Water is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making and better serve its residents and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the community as a platform for innovation, I can't say, innovation. And therefore, Debbie Sullivan, mayor of the city of Tom Water, does hereby proclaim November 19th, 2025, GIS Day, and calls upon the people of the city of Tom Water to learn about the GIS applications and data available on our website and encourage geospatial education in our community.
Great, thank you. And we have one of our newest employees, Nemo Paulson, who will be coming and accepting the proclamation. And if you have a couple of words, that would be great. And if you have anything you want to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Nemo Paulson. I am a GIS intern here at City of Tom Water. I've been here for about 10 months now. I love it here. I'm also a student at the Evergreen State College. I am a senior. I'm about to graduate with my bachelor's and also my GIS certificate. I am hoping to continue on with Evergreen and my master's in environmental science, and I hope to stay here with the city. I really love the people here. I really love working here. We are also having a public event tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So if any of you could show up, that would be absolutely wonderful. We're going to do some map making. So if that interests you at all, that's wonderful.
Where's the event going to be?
It's going to be right here, right in the room you're in right now.
Thank you.
And where there'd be refreshments.
There will be cake.
Cake.
Well, thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, our next special item is body worn camera implementation briefing, and I believe our police chief will be presenting.
I'll be, Mayor, I'll be introducing.
Oh, you'll be introducing. Okay.
So as you know, we've been working towards implementation, selection and implementation of the body worn cameras for the Tom Water Police Department for a while now. Deputy Chief Keelis has been leading this effort on our behalf, and he was going to give a briefing to council so you understand where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. So Deputy Chief Keelis?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In a short period of time, I'm going to go over the long road that has taken us to get here. But I think everyone will be pleasantly surprised and happy with the work that's been done and where we're at now. So Tom Water PD Body Worn Camera Project. The team that's leading this is myself, Administrative Sergeant John Kendersey, our Strategic Advisor, Dr. Oliver Bowers, and then our new Record Supervisor, Ashley Clark. So these were the individuals that helped me tremendously get this project to where it is today. Where we're at right now in the implementation steps is we have tentative budget approval. We've completed the staffing that we've needed to have in place to make sure that we can handle all the video that will be coming in. We've conducted a needs assessment to figure out what we need, what our community expects and wants, and making sure that we meet the needs of the organization. We've completed a due diligence check with our partners to make sure that the technology we select is in line with what we need, as well as technology that they're using as well. We're currently in the contract phase, which is in process, and that's in process and has been sent for legal review. So we're kind of in that process right now. And after that, we'll be going to procurement and then installation. So this is kind of how the timeline shook out. And so in August 2025, we promoted Sergeant John Kendersey as the Administrative Sergeant. We needed that position because of the amount of work it takes to install, implement, maintain the body worn camera and in-car video program. And we just didn't have capacity to take that on without a new person. It's a pretty massive undertaking. Then in September, we hired Ashley Clark as the Record Supervisor. We'll be at least doubling the amount of video that we're taking in right now. And so without extra support staff to handle the video process, to get that to the prosecutor's office, and PDR requests, it would have just been, we wouldn't have been able to handle that. So we had to wait till we had the proper personnel in place to make sure that we could handle and process all the video and get it out in a timely manner. On September 4th, the project officially kicked off, and that was our first meeting between myself and the folks on that on that team, and where we set the expectation and the priorities of where this project was currently, where it needed to be, and what the expectation was for moving it forward. We determined that before we could move forward, we needed to conduct a needs assessment. We need to figure out what do we want the system to do? What do we want the capabilities to be? We needed to make sure that what we were asking the system, the system to do that was in line with our community's expectations, that it also met the needs of the department. That was completed. And one of the things we identified is our agency partners, Lacey Olympia and the Thurston County Sheriff's Office, all use Axon Video. And one of the things we determined to be very important is to have commonality in equipment amongst the four agencies so that everyone was familiar how every other agency worked, what their equipment capabilities were, how they operated. And because we've had some issues in the past when agencies are using different video systems and they're not compatible, and you can't, you know, process information back and forth. So that was our number one goal. So once Axon was determined to be the vendor, based off of the commonality with our agency partners, we knew that the prosecutor's office was already familiar with Axon and Evidence.com because they're already using it with Olympia Lacey and the sheriff's office. Axon had the best technology and the features that we were looking for, and what we knew the community would expect, and what the organization needed. And also, Axon is on the state contract. So they had already been vetted and were approved as a vendor solution that we could just select and move forward with. But they were selected primarily for their, the technology that they bring, the ease of use of that technology, and how robust the system is. And we'll go over some of that stuff here in a minute. After that, we did the due diligence check. I asked our Record Supervisor and our Administrative Sergeant to reach out to the agencies using Axon to make sure that there wasn't anything we were missing. Were there any things that they wish they could have or would have done differently so that we weren't making the same mistakes? Once that was done, all the agencies loved Axon. It works well for them. It was going to work well for us. So once that was completed, and we verified that we weren't missing anything, we moved forward with the final demonstration to the command staff. Axon walked us through the system from the start, all its capabilities. I was very impressed, as was Chief Mason and the members of the team on what Axon brings to the table. And we'll talk about some of those things here in a little bit. Right now, and we're in October, we've procured two body worn cameras for field use. We have those here, and we're ready to begin deployment of those in November. Basically, so officers will go out in the field, make sure that our infrastructure technology-wise is working correctly. We don't have any issues with video upload or video retrieval, or if there's anything that we need to look at differently to make sure that when that technology comes that we don't have any hiccups and we're ready, ready to go. We began cost and contract discussions with them in October. November, we're going to start the testing. This month, we have a tentative policy that's been created that's in alignment with both the department and the police guild. And we've also began impact bargaining with the police guild, which we believe probably can be wrapped up by the, hopefully by the end of this month. December, we're looking, we're hoping to determine final costs on the project. We're hoping to finalize an agreement with a memorandum of understanding with the police union for the use of body worn cameras. And we're hoping that we can get a purchase agreement finalized by the end of the year. If we can get that done by the end of the year, procurement of in-car video and body worn cameras, about 60 to 90 days out. It depends on the month. Sometimes they're closer to 60, sometimes they're closer to 90. We just don't know what that's going to look like. And then once that's done, we have the camera installation. We have February through April in there, only because we don't know how long, when we're going to be able to get on their schedule. Axon will come out. They're going to install all of our stuff for us. We won't know what that timeline will be until we get the contract finalized and we get on their, on their schedule. So talking with the rep, it appears that what we see before us, the May 2025 officer and staff training, that's a pretty conservative, like that's worst-case scenario. We should be better than that, but I'd rather be realistic in case there's some hiccups that, you know, we're not promising body worn cameras in February and it ends up being May. So what are we proposing? We're proposing that for 48 Axon body worn cameras, we will get new cameras every 30 months with Axon. So every two and a half years, they will take our cameras currently in use, and they will send us the latest and greatest of what they have put out. We're proposing 29 in-car cameras, which will replace all of our current in-car cameras so that we're not running two systems. We're just running one system that communicates with each other. And it significantly will improve staff time in trying to manage the video and getting the video to where it needs to go. And we would get, we get new in-car cameras every five years. So every new contract cycle, if we continue to go with Axon, they would replace all of our in-car cameras with the latest and greatest that they have come out with. We're also excited about this. I was able to demonstrate this at an Axon event with real-time translation. And basically what that is, the body worn cameras now have the capability to offer translation services in 50-plus different languages. So officers who go out in the field with community members who either don't speak English or have limited English capability, that they'll be able to communicate them right away in an emergency situation to find out what's wrong, what do they need, where we need to go versus now, an officer will either have to try to use their phone, or they got to call a language line, and we lose a lot of time that way. Like I said, I demonstrated this in Spanish. I was very impressed with what it, what it did. It was very accurate. But I believe this is something that the community would really benefit from, is officers being able to communicate with individuals in their native, in their native, comfortable language. We're proposing the redaction assistant, and this is technology that Axon has that allows staff to redact video at an accelerated rate. So I believe on one of the presentations, Axon said that for every 10 minutes that the redaction assistant needs to work, it's about two hours of staff time. So it significantly increases staff productivity in getting video where it, where it needs to be, because there's going to be a lot of video. It's very time-consuming, and someone still has to put eyes on and review all the video before it can be released. And then Axon Community Request. Basically, this is, this is a part of the Axon suite that allows for community members who have either photos, surveillance video, Ring cameras, or any type of evidence that they want to get to the police that we can put out there, that would go straight into our evidence system without an officer having to go out there, get it from them, classify it, and put it in the system. So we're super excited about this. It's something that could have been very useful, useful to us in a couple of incidents that have happened. And I believe the other agencies are using this as well. And then Axon Performance is basically just the ability to get key body worn camera metrics. It tells us if cameras are working, how often they're on, making sure, you know, we can review videos, make sure videos are categorized correctly, all these things that if they're not checked and done correctly significantly increases staff time. So with that, I'll take any questions.
All right, any questions?
I was just thinking on the redaction assistant. So you have one staff person that will be reviewing the, each, so each, how many officers you have? And then you have one person that will be reviewing each day's, each patrol, when they're out on patrol, they have to review that day's patrol?
No, the Records Division has six support personnel, one record supervisor. And so as the video comes in, it doesn't automatically get reviewed and redacted. It only gets redacted upon a public disclosure request from a member of the public.
Okay.
And then what happens is, is they rotate. So there's not one person that has to do all the body worn camera in-car video redaction. Everyone kind of takes their share, so one person's not being, not being overloaded. We just added two more personnel to, to provide this functionality.
Okay, so that's just on the redaction. I was just imagining this. So when, again, though, when these come in, does somebody review these every day then? Is just, just an officer review the cameras?
No, they're only reviewed when they need to be reviewed, or an officer needs to review it for a case, or cases that go to the prosecutor's office go straight there without, without redaction, of course. But they only have to be reviewed is when they, when a member of the public asks for a public disclosure request, and we need to make sure we're redacting the appropriate items.
I could imagine. It was just like, that would be a lot. Okay, thank you.
So Officer Quinelli, you did mention the, I thought I heard surveillance, and then the Axon family suite. Is that what that is, as you said? Something about Axon family and then surveillance. Did I hear that correctly?
I don't understand that question.
Go, go back like two slides over.
I'll get to you next, Councilmember Jefferson.
Yeah, so my question is very simple. So in terms of the data that is collected in the field, we keep this data on our server, right? And we don't share this data with anybody.
The data is stored in the Axon cloud, which is, which is secured, and it's only accessed by us. Axon doesn't share any data or any videos with any organizations or anyone else. It's our data.
Okay. Do we, would we, how we looking to have an IRA that specifically mentioned that, that our data does not get shared with anybody, given the fact that the state of Washington does that, that one Washington where data is not shared? So I want us to be cognizant of what the state rules are and that we're following that. So before, before this camera has become our operation in the field, I will request that you and Chief come to Public Insurance Safety Committee and tell us exactly how that IRA, if there is going to be one, because I don't know if there's one, how that will work, so that at least we'll know what the policies are around that.
Okay. So just for clarification, the video that comes off of the body worn cameras is our video, and it's evidence. The only way it gets released is by public disclosure request by law, or if we could transfer it to the prosecutor's office, which is, you know, so it is very different from flock camera systems or other camera readers that you're probably been seeing a lot of information about. So this is evidence, and it's strictly controlled by state law, and it isn't shared, so to speak. It's not shared information. It is ours.
Thank you. Thank you. I think I got, thank you.
All right, I'll go to Councilmember Jefferson, and then I'll go to Councilmember Althouser.
Yes. Is the SOP or the policy book written on it, for example, when to turn it off, when to turn it on, et cetera?
Hold on, Chief Mason.
So we have a working policy. It's something that we actually have to have by state law. We have to have a working policy in place before we can even test the system. So before we can even have an officer put one on, we're required to have a working policy. That policy is very much in line with our neighboring jurisdictions. And one of the things that I had told council quite a while ago is that before we finalize the policy, I am going to reach out to each of you individually and kind of walk through what the policy means for our organization and get input from you. And then we're also looking at different ways we can field input from our community in addition to what we've already done.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief Mason.
Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you. So two questions. One was, Chief, you mentioned the ability for the prosecutor's office to be able to get this as evidence, but the same is true for defense counsel, correct? Like if the video may contain exonerating evidence of wrongdoing, then defense counsel has equitable access to be able to pull and retrieve video evidence, correct?
Of course. So the defense has two separate ways that they can get this evidence. One is through the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor's office is required to provide it to them through their disclosure process. We've also seen, the defense has also started doing public disclosures on cases directly to us. So they have two different pathways for getting this, this information.
Okay. And my second question is sort of a follow-up to Councilmember Jefferson's question on the, the working policy. So that does not require councilmatic approval, correct, for the procedures for like when a camera has to be on and what those rules are and things like that?
That is correct.
Okay. And you mentioned sort of reaching out individually. I think like this isn't, according to the timeline, going to happen until 2026, which is after the time in which I will no longer be on the council. But I think like, looking forward, it sort of seems like maybe that would be a ripe topic for a work session as opposed to sort of individual outreach, so that there is some sort of public modicum of transparency for when the cameras are on, when they're off, how all of that information is collected and works. Because I know that in our neighboring jurisdictions, some of our council colleagues on other councils have received a lot of public inquiry about, you know, what those policies are and the rationale for, for why they exist and why they are the way that they are. So I, I'd encourage this council or maybe the Public Safety Committee to have sort of a work session to talk about those things once it gets closer to rolled out.
Of course, whatever works best for this council. And like I said, the other piece too is because we do work so tightly with our neighboring jurisdictions, one of our goals was to align our policy with theirs, specifically with Lacey and Olympia, because, you know, our jurisdiction boundaries are, you know, not transparent. And so that's, our policy aligns almost identically with theirs. But we can have the discussion. I'd love to have the discussion at a work session and field input and identify, you know, and have the discussion on, you know, where, where do you want us to be and how do we get there as, as an organization?
Yeah. One of the other questions I had, which is no longer as relevant, was like, if we're providing mutual aid in a different jurisdiction, like if we are helping respond to a very serious event in Olympia, does that mean that the policies governing the cameras in Olympia take precedent over the policies that we have in Tom Water? But if they're the same, then that question becomes easier to sort of figure out and solve.
So first of all, our officers are governed by our policies. So in mutual aid, our officer, our policies dictate when our officers our policies dictate when our officers would activate or not activate, just like it is with use of force and pursuit. But also along the lines of what you were just saying is that our policy is going to be nearly identical for activation and deactivation. So I don't know there will be much conflict. Actually, Deputy Chief Keelis is the subject matter expert on that and he could weigh in if there's, if he has anything else.
No, we pretty much mirrored our policies with Olympia and Lacey so that officers had the same expectations, no matter what jurisdiction they were in. And Olympia and Lacey's policies are very much in line with expectations that I think the community would expect for when they should be on and when they shouldn't be.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great. Any other questions? Great. Thank you. I, I know that this has been a long time coming and, and it's good to, you know, these types of very complex things just do not happen overnight, especially getting the infrastructure of staff and, and all of that up to speed. It, it just is time consuming. So really appreciate all the hard work that your department's been doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are now going to go to public comment portion. So at this time, we'll receive public comment. So you may comment on items related to city business. And there was a sign up sheet at the back of the room, which I am being handed. And so when I call your name, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and contact information for the record. Each individual will be limited to one three minute session. And we do have a clock for your remarks, regardless of the number of topics you wish to address. All comments shall be directed towards council as a whole and not to individual council members and not to members of the audience. And so also asking to refrain from disruptive behavior. So with that, we have Justin Hunt, if you could come to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Justin Hunt. Where's that? Eight six one seven Kimmy Loop Southwest here in Tom Water. And phone number's two five three nine zero four four one four zero if you need it. I'm originally from New Jersey, so I talk quick, so I'll be under the three minutes. My name is Justin Hunt. I'm a longtime Tom Water resident, an Army Combat Veteran, retired, father, grandfather, and a deeply invested member of this community. Professionally, I actually serve as a Senior Vice President of Real Estate and Bank Facilities for Heritage Bank, which means I oversee multiple properties throughout the region, including here in Tom Water. I'm very familiar with property security, the requirements, liability exposure, and the risks associated with any unmanaged or unmonitored sites. And I'm here tonight because I've seen the early warning signs before, both in my career and in my life, and I know what happens when they're ignored. I live near the intersection of Kimmy and Seventy Six and Center Street, so just down the road over here, where the Port of Olympia owns a vacant parcel of land. For several years, my family, my neighbors, and I have repeatedly witnessed people carrying bags, tents, and belongings into the wooded area, as well as RVs and trucks parked off the road. We've seen garbage, abandoned items, and the kind of quiet, consistent activity that indicates that people are living within these trees. I've contacted the port. I've also contacted Tom Water Police multiple times, including both in person here and phone calls. Responses have been brief, they've been cursory, and the problem continues to grow. Under the Tom Water Municipal Code eight point zero four, abandoned property, garbage, and unsanitary conditions constitute a public nuisance. And the property owner, which in this case is the Port of Olympia, is responsible for the abatement. Under TMC eighteen fifty-nine, any homeless encampment must have a host agency, security plan, sanitation measures, and clear rules. None of that's happening. At the state level, proposed legislation as SB five zero two eight recognizes unauthorized camping on public properties creates safety hazards, health risks, and long-term financial burdens on the taxpayers. There's a Supreme Court ruling and City of Grants passed First Johnson two zero two four affirming cities may enforce this generally applicable laws against camping. I'm going to skip some of this due to the short on time. But I'm not speaking as a professional who just understands the risk. As a combat veteran, I've seen and trained, recognized danger before it escalates. And as a father and grandfather who wants children, including my own grandchildren, be able to safely walk, bike, and drive past this property, not asking for anything extreme, just early proactive action before this becomes far more dangerous, costly, and difficult to address. I care about the safety of our residents here in Tom Water, care about the well-being of individuals who may be living in unsafe hidden conditions within those trees. Respectfully ask that the council follow up with the port. Tom Water Police report back to the neighborhood on steps that will be taken. And I do thank you for your time and your commitment to keeping Tom Water safe and your service to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Nicandry.
David Nicandry, five oh five Fourth Avenue Southwest, just up the hill from Councilmember Althausser. You know, for a long time, I would come here and I would complain about stuff. And lately I've been coming in a more commendatory fashion. By the way, I've reserved the right to go back to that moment if need be. But I've been, I've had occasion to come by and thank people and acknowledge them. This is, this is awkwardly self-congratulatory to a point, but it's really about Tom Water history. I want to thank Councilmember Jefferson and Councilmember Swarthout to coming to a recent presentation at the Schmidt Mansion regarding the All Roads Lead to Tom Water Initiative. I've known for, I'm proud of saying, and I often do, that I was elected to this council in the mid nineteen seventies. So I've been around a while. And it struck me that this community has always had a sense, a sense of its distinctive history. I mean, all communities have history, but Tom Water, it has a distinctive history, certain evocative themes out of proportion to its size and perhaps perception. And I just want to acknowledge the enthusiasm and the support of the two council members that came to this presentation. I think their presence warrants the support that we need to move this agenda forward. We have a meeting Thursday night to go to the implementation phase. It'll be over here at the fire station. That is, that's where it'll be, right Chuck? So that's it. I just want to thank you for coming out and showing your support by being there in person to represent to the larger community of the, the distinctive history we have in this community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. That's all that I had signed up in the room. Do we have any online?
No, we do not.
All right. So is there anyone else in the council chambers that would like to speak and make public comment? Not seen any. We will now move to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Okay. Who is first?
He's first.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, second by Councilmember Agabi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right. The motion carries. With that, we have approved minutes of the city council meeting on November third, payment vouchers, ordinance number O twenty twenty five dash zero one six, ad valorem, regular property tax for fiscal year twenty twenty six, supplemental agreement number one to SCJ Alliance for the I five State Route one twenty one ninety-third Avenue interchange improvements, service provider agreement with Sergeant Engineering for on-call engineering services amendment one, service provider agreement with Santac for Pioneer Park Restoration Project Amendment four, and land lease with Eastcope Consortium, Inc. for the GPS station at Tom Water Hill Park. So with that, we will now move to council considerations. And the first item is the twenty twenty six legislative agenda and a city administrator parks will present.
Good evening, council members. I will be here only briefly. I have the pleasure of introducing our lobbyists who are helping us with this state legislative session. So first of all, I'd like to introduce Katie Whittier. She's the Vice President of Washington State Affairs for CFM Advocates. And with her is Brian Enslo, who is the Principal with Arbitus Consulting. And after their presentation, Kelly will be coming to you with a recommendation for our next steps with regard to our twenty twenty six Washington State Legislative Agenda. There you go.
Thanks so much. I'm Katie Whittier. It's great to be here. You, I saw me a couple weeks ago at your work session. So we're going to keep this relatively high level of the review of what we're looking at for the legislature. And I do have a couple of updates as well that just came through in the last, oh, I would say thirty-six hours that you might find interesting. So we'll mention that. We have a couple of slides. I don't know if that'll be helpful, probably to have those up there, actually. Go ahead and move on to the slide after that. So as you'll recall, we are going in as your top priorities this year, all being funding requests. There obviously will be a lot of policy issues that come up that will be of concern and we'll be tracking those for you as well. But we're going to spend a lot of time, effort in, in getting some, some potential funding coming your way. Now, one of the updates here, there was a revenue forecast that came out today, this afternoon. And the bottom line is things are fairly unchanged. Some folks, especially the appropriations chairman, are seeing that as great news. It hasn't gotten worse. But pretty much what we told you before, we're still going into what looks like a significant deficit year. The four-year outlook is looking about, excuse me, a six billion dollar deficit that they're going to be grappling with. That is less than what was talked about last year, but it's still significant. And so you're starting to see some revenue proposals come out in the news, starting to see some of the early conversations about efficiencies and other things. But the, the good, bad, neutral news is that it's unchanged. So we are going into the legislative session approximately where we thought we were. That said, we do have some commitments to move forward with restoring your habitat conservation plan funding to secure land that can be renovated into prairie land and open up development opportunities across Tom Water. That request is, was two million dollars, remains two million dollars, and we have some commitments to go after that money. I am fairly optimistic going in that that is, that is something that we can pursue with confidence. And I hope to be able to deliver some great news in that respect. We'll also go in asking for support on your planned action EIS related to the brewery district. It's already underway. Your early phase of the EIS with the advisory committee is already going. There is a good amount of regional attention on the issue, just given how visible that area is. The five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a, a, a healthy ask, but I think something that legislators would be willing to consider. We do not have open support for that yet, mostly because we have not shopped it as much. We just are getting started in that respect. And then the third priority being the East Street Connection design phase. We talked about this last time with the work session. The chances of a transportation package in this session are, are, are very low. I'm not optimistic we will see progress here. But being able to start talking about it now and preparing for future sessions where a transportation opportunity opens up, I think is extremely important to keeping that project moving forward and also to ascertain what the support looks like within the legislature.
And I think, but just what Katie was saying, many of you maybe saw a, an open letter from the Senate Ways and Means Chair to individuals saying, I'm not accepting any more budget requests. And, and although that is very valid to take into consideration and help like manage expectations around like what is the context, it is important to say, that's with respect to the operating budget. There's still going to be some capital opportunities. There's still, well, we'll see, but there's, in, in all the time I've been monitoring the legislature, I've, I've never not seen a local community projects list. So I, I would still highly anticipate it. But, so I do think it makes sense to continue to move forward with capital budget requests. I don't think it's toned up. And I think it would be, it would not be our recommendation to not move forward with things, even in light of that conversation. It's, it is the job of the budget gatekeepers to tell you there's no money, even when there is money. And in this case, especially when it is very tight, it even makes more sense. But I did want to add that context.
Thank you. And I am hearing some other folks say they're, they're very cautious about their budget requests, which might help, you know.
I have a question too, Alon, because you understand, like budget provisos that somehow that get slipped in, are they even looking, well, are those going to be no to budget provisos that get slipped in? Do you have any knowledge about that?
So I would be surprised if there weren't some budget additions. Even in the leanest years, there are ideas that have enough political support or enough financial necessity that they do materialize. And so to, to your case specifically, whether it's just done as a budget proviso, or if it's a specific item in, in, you know, an agency's budget or something like that, I, I would be surprised if there weren't some. I also wouldn't be surprised if you see cute things like old budget tricks where it's say, where instead of adding money, it just says within like an agency's existing budget, they have to do something.
Right.
So I, I would anticipate seeing things like that as well.
So we need to have some eyes on some of these things?
A hundred percent.
Yes, thank you.
Great. We can go into a little bit more detail on each of these. So you're familiar with this project, the HCP project, getting land under city control so that you can begin to restore that, make it into proper habitat to get U.S. Special Wildlife to sign up, sign off on an HCP, and then move forward with your plan to be able to develop parcels and use money from that development in order to fund more purchases of land going forward. So extremely important to the future of Tom Water, extremely important for goals like housing and jobs. And legislators in your region understand that. We have heard that loud and clear that they understand that and the importance of it. This is a combined effort with the Port of Olympia. And we will be working together with them to, to see if we can, we can move this back under, under your purview, since you did have this money before and it is time to restore that. We can move on to the next one. So planned action EIS, again, is a very visible project to anyone, not just this region, anyone who travels I five and all of the legislators do. So we do expect to have some conversation about it. I imagine there will be some more attention in the news that will come up because your, your advisory committee work is underway. As their scoping process comes to an end, then we can more closely ask for this five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move forward with the, the next phase of that planned action EIS, which should take about twelve months. And finally, the design for the East Street Connection. Moving into that design phase, we had really good, robust discussion a couple of weeks ago at that work session, just how early we still are in that process. Ultimately, we anticipate that that design phase is going to be about six million dollars in needed funds. There's other, other funds already put together for the work, as I understand it. But that state funding is going to be really, really important. Looking long-term, having a new east-west corridor to connect the community will really facilitate movement as we grow and facilitate economic development as the brewery district also comes together. So an extremely important piece of the overall Tom Water puzzle. And we're planning now to get, to get some funding going forward in the future when the transportation opportunity arises. And one thing I did want to bring up that we didn't talk about last time and I've, I've heard about since, you may recall a couple of years ago, an effort around the wildland urban interface when it comes to fires and development standards at the edges of communities. There was a map that I, as I understand it, a couple of years ago, that caused Tom Water some concern. And hearing that that map is back, it's been modified a little bit, but probably not to the point that it would make City of Tom Water comfortable. I'm trying to track down more information and get that to you, but that's an example of one of the things that's popping up policy-wise that could have an impact that we're going to be, going to be tracking for sure.
Yeah, we, we think, I think, we think DNR has been vetting that with the fire community broadly, and, but I don't think it's been distributed largely with the city community yet. So it's something we've heard.
Yep.
Great. Again, Brian Enslo here. It, it has been, it's our understanding that it's been traditional that you adopted by proxy AWC's priorities as well. Councilmember, to your point earlier about being vigilant, especially this year with respect to state shared revenues, some of those major revenue sources that the state shares directly with the City of Tom Water is the County Criminal Justice Council's cannabis revenue, things of that nature. So we, we know that those are critical to provide ongoing services that are performed here at the, at the city. And so we want to make sure that those are protected. There has been a lot of legislation and a lot of interest in housing. There has been somewhat of a, you know, a narrative around what, 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 whether cities have been good partners or bad partners. We know there's two hundred and ninety-six cities out there. So I think having a priority at AWC that really shows a support for moving forward in a progressive manner around housing supply, I think, is valuable to kind of try to combat that narrative and really approach it in a proactive way. Indigent offense, we know with the adoption of the new court rules around caseload standards for misdemeanits, also with respect to Blake, shifting more and more of, 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 kind of the emphasis around SUD and, and, and.
and enforcement of that nature to cities as well, as driven needs. And then lastly, you know, every year when the Washington State Department of Transportation submits their, their, their budget, they say, oh, by the way, we have hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of deferred maintenance. That story is true for local governments as well. Preservation and maintenance is a key concern. And in addition to that, whether it's grant funds for bike and pedestrian, whether it's safe routes to school, Transportation Investment Board, Freight Mobility Strategy Invest Board, things like that. Really important to make sure that local resources are maintained as we're at this key transition point between moving away from gas tax and perhaps adopting other methods for providing for transportation resources, such as like a road usage charge or things like that, making sure that local government resources are included in that mix moving forward. And I think that's the conclusion of my slide.
So that's a high-level overview of what we're looking forward to in the legislative session coming right up. Any other questions we can answer?
Any questions? Councilmember Von Holtz.
I'm just wondering, because I'm hearing from other local municipalities, like I know that there's a county that wasn't able to make payroll. There's a city that's filing for bankruptcy. Does Tomwater being fiscally responsible, is that helpful? Or is it like, we might have to, sorry, you guys are going to have to take it on the chin because you've been doing such a good job. Because we gotta, not that these other municipalities are doing a bad job, but like their, their issues are a little bit more extreme than what you have right now. Is that a concern?
I mean, I would, I don't want to be glib, but I would reflect the question back to you. I mean, this being fiscally responsible, is it helpful? Is it helpful for you and your community first and foremost, right? But I think your question is asking us in the legislative process.
Right, and they're, and they're.
Yeah, it is, because it hasn't been easy for you to do that, right? And you've had to make tough choices about what you, what you fund and what you move forward. And so I think that's part of the conversation. I think that adds to the flavor. So I, I don't think there's any concern, and I think you should be proud of the work you've done. But again, my, my feeling is that that hasn't come without, you know, opportunity costs and things like that, and that's part of the story as well.
I'd add that it puts you in a strong position, right? It's, we want to invest in places where they know what to do with the money, right? So I think it helps us make an ask for you. There's not a whole lot of appetite at the state level to bail out cities if they can avoid it, right? So that they don't have to do that with you, gives you that credibility.
Any other questions? All right, I think we have to take action on this. So.
Hello, Mayor and Council, I have the easiest job tonight. And so that's to make the recommendation.
Hold on a moment, Councilmember Althouser, did you have something?
Excuse me, sorry. Yeah, I was just going to say that I'll be abstaining from the vote. Just as a legislative employee, I won't be taking action or taking part in the vote, so I'll be abstaining. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
And so our staff recommendation is that council approves the city's 2026 legislative agenda.
I'll take, I'd like to make the motion to approve the city's 2026 legislative agenda.
Can I second that motion?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And Councilmember Althouser will be sustaining?
Abstaining.
Abstaining, sorry. It's been a long day. All right, so the motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you might be sustaining too, you know.
Time will tell.
The next item is Alternative Response Team Grant Agreement with the Association of Washington Cities. And Sean Krimmons, we will be presenting.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor and council members for this opportunity. Have a couple of real short presentations, ones that will be real, real short. These are really tied together, so this first one is just really talking about our grant opportunity with AWC, with Association of Washington Cities, to help fund our CARES program. So for this, and I'll get more into the CARES program again, just as, you know, reeducation with that program is. But this, what this grant is going to potentially do with your approval is currently our CARES employee works about 20 hours a week for us. So what this grant's going to help do is staff that position 40 hours a week, which is, which is great. The grant reimburses the city up to the $111,178 for the basically state's fiscal year, July 1st, 2025 through 2026. And then we do have the opportunity to extend it two times through 2028 with a simple amendment signed by both cities. So like I said, this one's going to be real short, so that's the recommended action. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to the grant, if you have any.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion? Because we'll probably have to do these separately, so.
I'll move to authorize the mayor to sign the Alternative Response Team Grant Agreement with the Association of Washington Cities.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Von Holtz, seconded by Councilmember Swarthout. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous, thank you. And your next item is the FD CARES interlocal agreement with the city of Olympia, Amendment One.
All right, well, thank you for, for a little of that. It's like the chicken and the egg, so we got that part done, I guess. This is the FD CARES Amendment, number one, with the city of Olympia. So once again, our CARES program, what CARES stands for is Community Assistance Referral and Education Services. This is a collaboration that we started back in November of 2024, so almost a year ago. It's our partnership with Olympia Fire Department, and they have several CARES members that are work throughout the city of Olympia as well. Once again, currently, our CARES employee that's dedicated to the city of Tomwater works about 20 hours a week. With the approval of that grant and then going through this, that'll be now a full-time position, which is exciting for us. A little bit of data and a little bit of information here. The, through October, so basically January through October this year, our CARES, Ariana Gomez is her name. She has done 55 referrals through October. One thing that the CARES program does a great job is reducing the amount of 911 calls. I'll get into that here in a sec. The other thing is they also are able to go out and educate some of our adult care facilities, like, for example, Olympics West. We go out there quite regularly to have conversations with them about, you know, increasing their services or what, maybe what, how can we help them? Once again, they work in collaboration, which is our new Tomwater Mobile Outreach Team, the Crisis Team, that was just started up back here in October. They are actually working in collaboration with our Tomwater Mobile Outreach Team that Olympic Health and Recovery helps us run. So that's exciting as well. Once again, it'll be 40 hours a week. The numbers here are for 2026, so that, as you can see, that's our agreement with the city of Olympia to pay for our CARES specialist.
And I, and I do see Councilmember Jefferson's hand, is that, did you have something related to this?
Yes, I did, Mayor. So is this individual a social worker?
Yes, social worker, really their, kind of their expertise is also just knowing what's out there and being able to put that person, whoever the referrals for, in contact with whatever services they potentially may need, yeah.
Okay, so their degree is in social work?
Yeah, she, Ariana, Ariana, actually, I think she just ended up finishing her degree within this last year, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Once again, this is linked to the, the agreement that you just passed. A little bit more data here. One of the, it's kind of hard to see, and I apologize. The top four reasons that our CARES teams get referrals are, the first is health support services. And what that can entail is they get referred for physical and mental health, physical therapy, occupational therapies, maybe some specialized doctors, companion care. Those are just some examples of kind of that referral. The next one up on this chart is caregiver, caregiver services. And one of the, typically the things that are being done for that are in-home caregivers, senior housing, assisted living and skilled nursing, so maybe referring them to those facilities. It might be a recent fall, could be onset of dementia, so they're really helping them navigate some of the needs that that potential patient or person being referred needs. 911 dependency, this is an area that certainly is a benefit to us in the fire department and fire EMS. One of our enthusiastic customers, let's say, that utilizes 911, we saw a 50% reduction in calls from Ariana going out and having communication with, with that resident, so. And then last, general medical, general medical care. It's kind of a catch-all, but they also help, it could be going out and getting dental work or finding a primary care doctor. So a lot of those are, we were kind of talking about a lot of social services and just plugging them into spots that maybe they didn't have access to or just didn't know about, so. So that's kind of the, the graph on the left. The one on the right really is more the age, as you can kind of see, a lot of our referrals are 65-plus. But Ariana has had experience throughout the age range, so. And with that, and just so you're aware, Ariana Gomez is the second one on the right. That's, that's our CARES specialist that is specifically for Tomwater. So with that, that's the recommended action, but happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Somehow I thought it was someone that went out and like provided healthcare to the frequent flyers. That's kind of what I was thinking.
Right.
That's not, okay.
No, they're, so they're not, you know, EMTs or paramedics or, you know, LPNs currently. You know, there is some programs that do that, and that might be the next phase of these programs is.
Right, so you don't have to dispatch an EMT on a fire.
Yeah, you know, there is programs that do have like RNs go out or, or, you know, like a, that can maybe write a prescription, you know, maybe it's a PA or something like that, but currently that's not, it's more social work. And then honestly, and there's sometimes that they even drive them to a doctor's appointment, you know, just providing the services.
Thank you for the clarification, appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Yes. Yes, so, so these individuals are, she is in an office and is she, I know she's not screening 911 calls, but tell me what a day is like for her.
Well, I know she's at the fire station because I see her. But yes, the, so she actually has a staff vehicle that we provide for her. And how it really works is either somebody calls, you know, wanting their services, because we've put it out there, or a lot of times our crews go out, see a patient that they feel like needs services, whether it's a repeat 911 caller or maybe somebody that had a fall but could use some fall prevention things around the house. So our crews will actually refer through our, our incident reporting, and she'll get that case. And when she comes on that next day, she'll go out, make contact with the resident. And not all the times, they don't always want her, her help, but a good portion, 85% of the time, they are successful in reaching out, making contact, making a difference for that person. So it's, it's really that referral mostly from our crews that see them out in the field.
Okay, makes it a little bit more clear. Thank you very much, Chief.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, so are we ready to entertain an emotion?
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the FD CARES interlocal agreement, Amendment Number One, with the city of Olympia.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Jefferson, seconded by Councilmember Agabi. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I think this is a very beneficial program for our city, and I think it really helps residents and our staff. Next is ordinance number O-2025-008, which is amending the Tomwater Municipal Code, Section 12.32 for public parks. And our director Chuck Denny will be presenting.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yes, here tonight to talk to you about something that's been on hold for quite some time. The General Government Committee actually talked about this update in November of 2023. The council discussed that at a meeting in, on November 21st of 2023. And then we had kind of a big welcome to Tomwater for city administration, Lisa Parks, with a very large public meeting at Tomwater High School and people that were extremely upset and maybe didn't understand what we were trying to achieve with an update of the parks ordinances. Basically, I mean, in a nutshell, what we're doing here is we're taking our existing park ordinances, the rules that apply to all of our park facilities, and extending them to all city properties. We're not changing the parks ordinances, we're extending those rules to all city properties. So while they, they imply at all of our park facilities and how we operate parks, places like City Hall, the library, both fire stations, the police station, our parks and facilities, office building, the parks and recreation office building, those aren't covered under city parks. So really, it's, well, it's not just a free-for-all, you know, our, our standard ordinances apply. But we don't, we don't have a set of rules for those properties, how we operate them and how we deal with difficulties on those properties. So seemingly an easy fix, back in 2003, we, we expanded our rules from parks to include all city properties. So each of these rules that, that apply to parks really just have an added, and at all city properties. Or we've removed parks and just said city properties as parks are part of that too. So anyone visiting, participating, being on city property, the same rules apply anywhere in the city, whether you're on a park or whether you're on just standard city property. So I was going to try to refrain from reading through the 27 park rules and telling you that city property has been added to each one. That's in your packet. If you have, you have specific questions on any of the park rules in the ordinance, I'd be happy to address those individually with your concerns. The only thing that was added on here was if someone is excluded from a park, from a city property, and that could be for a violation of ordinance, which may or may not fall under the jurisdiction or the handling of, by the police department. If it's something in parks that they do that's maybe not necessarily a misdemeanor or an incident, I, I still have the ability to exclude someone from, from a park for a certain period of time, as do the police, whether it's, whether it's a criminal act or not, generally it would not be if it was in that case. We've added a section on how they can request a hearing and talk to the hearings examiner and see if they can get that repealed. So there, there's an avenue for someone who's excluded from a facility to be able to try to get that rescinded.
I see Councilmember Jefferson has her hand up.
Yes, I was surprised to see, so these are just updating rules, because there's a rumor out there that when we had that camping in city parks, so this is definitely not it. And I was surprised to see that you couldn't pick flowers in the park, and I am guilty of that because every once in a while at Historic Park, you have some beautiful roses. So I will not pick the roses from now on, but thank you.
I don't even know what to say to that.
Angela Chief Mason is getting us.
Yeah, yeah, we can't have, we can't have everyone in the public picking all their flowers. So we won't have any, we won't have any pollinators in our parks.
Yeah.
Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks. I think a lot of this makes sense for having things be equal across city properties. The questions that I have are mostly around the exclusionary orders. From your description, Chuck, that sounds like something that already exists, is that right? Like, like we already have the ability to order that someone isn't allowed to be in a certain place if they violate some of the rules? Like, like we have criminal misdemeanors right now, but I wasn't aware that we actually had the ability to bar someone from being in a public space.
That, 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 being able to bar someone has existed always. Them having the ability to go to the hearings examiner has not, and I can feel Karen wants to talk on this subject.
That seems loud. Yes, we are, we have the ability for the parks director to issue an exclusionary letter under the current code, and I can't recall, I don't remember now, but it's anywhere from one day to, I believe, a year. And it, and we also do have a provision that a hearing before the hearing examiner can be requested, but we didn't actually have procedures on what that would look like and that it would be told during the appeal period. And so now we've added those pre-deprivation procedural aspects to the code. We've also, as you mentioned, changed much of this from criminal charges to civil infraction. So we've made those corrections, I'll call them, in addition to just expanding these rules from parks to all of city property.
And are, is, the exclusionary order is not linked to civil liability by way of process, correct? It's not like?
No, it's, it's purely a, if he, you know, if he violated a rule, we can, rather than a criminal charge or an infraction, we can issue an exclusionary letter.
And so who, so, so Chuck is the director of parks, you would be the issuing authority of an exclusionary letter to a park? What, who would be the authority to issue that to the police station or the fire station or for City Hall or for other public properties that this would now apply to?
It's, it's listed as any enforcement officer, so anyone from the police department or perhaps city code enforcement.
So anyone in the police department could issue that? So there's a modicum of discretion for issuing an exclusionary order versus a civil liability infraction, if it was the police state or really any of these properties? Does, what, Karen, can you talk a little bit about the amount of discretion the hearing examiner possesses in terms of being able to waive the exclusionary order on appeal?
The, the new language establishes that the violation has to be proved by a preponderance of the evidence, and so the hearing examiner basically could uphold or deny the violation, uphold the exclusionary letter, could also modify the length of time.
Okay, so someone could theoretically be, theoretically, a police officer could issue an exclusionary letter to someone who was hanging out on City Hall for too long, and someone wanted to come to City Hall and violated that exclusionary order, what would then be the consequence of violating that?
I can't remember, I apologize, but I can't, typically, it, there's a, it would be included in the letter about what the next violation would be, but I, I think it would be an infraction.
That would also be a civil infraction.
Correct. So it would be progressive. You would have the exclusionary letter, then you would potentially have an infraction, and it would go from there.
And that would then also go to the hearing examiner for review?
Correct.
Which would have a preponderance standard, so it's like someone, if, let's say hypothetically, someone was coming to City Hall to pay their water bill, because they didn't have a stamp and don't use the online thing, and if they were issued an exclusionary letter, but they showed up at City Hall to pay their bill.
So.
Hearing examiner would just say, well, by a preponderance of the evidence.
Yeah, so, so I don't thi, I don't think that someone would receive an exclusionary letter from, from City Hall that would not have an exception to come do city business, legitimate city business would be allowed. So paying of bills, coming to a council meeting, and those sorts of things would, would still be allowed under an exclusionary letter, but you, you couldn't continue whatever behavior it was that was in violation of those rules on that property.
But there isn't anything in this draft ordinance that would prevent someone from issuing that? It's likely that that wouldn't be issued, but is there language in the ordinance that says that official city business is exempt from exclusionary letters?
Not specifically.
Okay.
Chuck, when was the last time an exclusionary letter was issued?
Never, we've never done it. You know, typically if something happens, you know, and it's been in park facilities in the past, you know, we, we work with police and, and they, they assist and, and if it goes on, if it's, if it's a larger issue, then they, they handle it. It's not something as Parks Recreation Director that I've been issuing or have ever issued.
Those are all great questions, and I think that we'll draft a template so that we know that some of these items need to be addressed in that letter if one gets issued.
Okay, sorry to ask so many questions and to hog the mic. Sorry, Joan, I see your hand up.
Council member Kathy, you're, you're muted.
That's fine, Michael, I, I wanted to hear the questions and answers anyway, it's good. If I remember, didn't the last time we talked about this, we talked mainly about sleeping in the parks or camping in the parks or camping on city property? I mean, this seems like a, either a different or an additional conversation about the one we had last time that people in the community were very, very concerned about.
It, it was, it started out last time as the very same conversation, but the, the conversation quickly got turned to a feeling of the general public that we, we were passing an ordinance that would almost promote homeless encampments in city parks. And regardless of the explanation, and, and Administrator Parks tremendous job at a public meeting with a whole bunch of angry citizens, some people just couldn't be convinced that we weren't trying to sneak through something to build homeless camps in parks. So some time has passed, a lot of cities have gone through this, some, some court cases have been settled and, and we're now at the point where we can say that we are still not allowing people to sleep overnight in city parks, and now that also includes on city property.
Let me ask a question.
So, so then the, the situations that Michael just brought up, and you said what would happen to someone if, if they did certain things, do we have some, something for people sleeping overnight in a park, not camping, but sleeping on a bench and leaving in the morning or that kind of thing? Just trying to remember all these, you know, conversations we had, so how is, and I remember we waited all this time for the Supreme Court decision.
So I'll take this one, council member Kathy.
Okay.
One of the 27 things that are not allowed in city parks and after adoption of this ordinance, city property is, I believe it's called loitering in the nighttime, which is essentially sleeping at night. In the previous version that was being reviewed in 2023, there was a new section that was being proposed in an attempt to demonstrate that the city of Tom Water was complying with what was commonly, what is commonly called the Grants Pass case at that Boise, excuse me, Boise case, there was Grants Pass in there also somewhere. But, so we were trying to add a section in the code that said, if you, if you are sleeping in the nighttime and you are not, we are not able to find a bed, then you are excluded from enforcement of that particular provision. This code, because the Supreme Court Act, the US Supreme Court has actually now taken action on the Boise and Grants Pass cases, we no longer have that particular provision in this draft ordinance. So all 27 of the prohibitions that are listed would be applicable across the board, and there are no exclusionary, there's no exclusionary enforcement with regard to any of those 27 provisions.
So, so if someone is found sleeping on a bench at night in, in our park, they have, they have no recourse, they have no whatever, you're just, what, what is this? How do we handle that? Do we just kick them off the bench or give them one of these letters or what is the situation?
The police officers will use the same discretion that they use when they are enforcing those regulations and, and others similar, and they will use their discretion to, to manage each individual situation. I, I don't believe our police officers ever just kick somebody off the bench and tell them to go home. I believe what they would do is approach that person, indicate that they are not allowed to sleep where they're currently sleeping, and then to the degree that they're able to and to the degree that that person is willing to accept some assistance, I believe they would try to work with that person to get them somewhere. And now that we actually have a crisis response team in the city of Tom Water, we now have a team away and a resource for our police officers to use where there might be somebody who, for example, is in some sort of a mental health crisis and maybe in a situation where they need some additional assistance other than just their own volition to find a place to be. The city of Tom Water continues to have challenges with regard to anything like an emergency shelter available for people in crisis and having difficulty finding a place to sleep at night. There is money in the budget and the community development department has on their work plan for 2026, an assessment to, money to do an assessment to understand what is the specific need in the city of Tom Water with regard to emergency shelters and that transitional housing for homelessness. The hope is that that study and assessment will help us understand what more we need that we can provide to people who are in this situation, but for now, the particular ordinance that we're trying to implement is an existing set of rules that apply to our parks and have applied to our parks for several years, and we're trying to give our police department the permission that they need in order to be able to provide assistance to people, to approach them when they are doing those negative things on city property as a whole.
Understood. We've, we've said in the past that Tom Water has some beds or some reservations or some ability or something to take people, like you say, that are willing to go and get a bed. I, I don't, I guess that must be somewhere in Olympia. Is that correct?
I do not believe there is a specific emergency shelter that is available for people in immediate crisis. There is a permanent supportive housing situation that's privately run, I believe. We do not track necessarily, our police officers, fire and EMS, and our community development housing staff do not specifically track and are not provided data about how many beds are open at any given point in time. Our police officers understand where those resources are and, and can try and provide the, a help in that manner if they, if it's available. If it's not, then that, we just don't have that available resource in the city of Tom Water. We are going to be doing a presentation, we, we, we do have, because of our crisis response partnership with Olympic Health and Recovery, with our, our mobile outreach team, Joe Avalos is going to come and talk with the Public Health and Safety Committee on December 9th. They do have access and some information that they track for the services that they provide, at least for people who are in crisis. So that won't necessarily give you data on all of the homelessness population and the people who are experiencing housing issues for Tom Water, but we do have the ability to provide some data through our mobile outreach team folks about at least those people who are experiencing homelessness and the, and as well as a mental health crisis or behavioral, behavioral health crisis.
Thank you for that, and that would be for people that the police or whoever would encounter, whether they were in a park or on any city property because of this ordinance we're passing. So if they found someone sleeping under the tree out here next to City Hall, they, whichever direction that is, they would offer the same thing, I mean, they would go through the same process.
They, they would, this ordinance gives them the authority and the permission to at least approach and have a conversation with that person. And that allows them then, then to make contact with people who are in need of help.
Okay, okay. Well, I think that we've, we've been through, Chuck remembers very well, how many times we've been through how to handle this, this kind of thing over the years, so I appreciate that we've, we've, it sounds like we've made some progress and some plans and some connections and some things to act toward, you know, homeless people or someone we do find or people who are on our property with some dignity and hope. So that makes me, that makes me feel better than just making a rule, if we find you, we're gonna, you know, like people say, kick you out or kick you off or send you a letter or something. So sounds like progress to me, so thanks.
Council member Von Holtz?
I'm gonna get on my managing expectations high horse again.
Can you bring your microphone down?
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. Managing expectations, I saw what was going on on social media, I read the amendments and I was like, okay, how do we get the public to understand that they maybe misunderstood the intent of what we're trying to do? Also, I'd asked, and unfortunately, Public Health and Safety was canceled because it fell on Veterans Day, to try to tell the story of, I understand we don't track necessarily how many people who are unsheltered in Tom Water, but our police and our fire know who they're dealing with on a day-to-day basis, they know, oh, I'm at Pioneer Park with this person, whatever that is, to try to start building the foundation of what the true story is, of what the need is. I mean, I love that we have access to benefits, you know, to help, because I think people have in their mind what someone who is unsheltered is, and it isn't always someone who has a mental health disorder, it's sometimes, well, oftentimes, it's a mom, it's, it's families that have gotten an unexpected bill and now they can't make rent and now they don't have anywhere to go, and to move into somewhere else is $6,000 if you're lucky. So I, that's why I had asked, so I'm excited to know that we're gonna get that presentation, but I still think, even though police and fire might not be doing a daily, like, we've seen this many people who are unsheltered, they know their experiences with the public, and I think that that's an important story to tell, so we know what it is and what it isn't. And I think that's where things got a little sideways on social media is because people are afraid and public health and safety is so very important. I mean, it's, it's right up there, like, I wanna be, I wanna eat, I wanna, I wanna be housed, I wanna be clothed, I want clean water, and I wanna be safe while I'm in Tom Water. So it's just a human thing, and I just feel like we could tell our story in a, in a, in a more clearer way so we don't have the panic that I was seeing on social media.
Yeah, the, agreed, especially the first time. When it came back this time, you know, I, I got a few calls, we certainly got calls at, at the parks email that our, that our marketing, social media person took care of, and then Jason and the Communications Department did a tremendous job of, of explaining again and again to the public and reaching out to all the people who came the first time with complaints and saying, hey, here's, here's what it really says and here's what it really does, to the point where, you know.
I know, I, I thought we were gonna come to a full house based on what I was seeing on Nextdoor, so I, I'm pleased about that, but I just think that, that there's another So I'm pleased about that, but I just think that there's another piece to the story. Like, and I say that because at our neighborhood barbecue, I live, I'm lucky and I live right next to one of Tumwater's finest. And that question was asked. And he did such a beautiful job of explaining the process, what our police officers do, what fire does. And I could see this person who was a little bit like this relax and know that Tumwater is doing what it needs to do to keep us all safe, including our residents who are unsheltered. So.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gabby?
So Chuck and Lisa and Mayo, on Sunday, I received four emails from Tumwater residents. And the question is, what I was going to be changing regarding this ordinance and what are we adding? And then the, the other part of the paragraph is, we should not allow homelessness in our park. And I remember we discussed this issue according to what Congress, Councilmember Kathy was getting at, 2023 and 2024. And for the life of me, I do remember what I ate this morning. So I'm not going to tell you what I ate because I, they're forgetful. So I routed the email to Debbie and to Lisa for them to provide an official statement to, to them. So Jason, I don't know what you've done or what you've said to, to this community. The, the impression is that we are going to be allowing homelessness in our park. That's what it is. So you're talking about exclusion. That's, they're not even talking about that at all. They're just saying we're allowing homelessness in our park and that is dangerous. So maybe we ought to put out again, because we've done it multiple times now, another statement to the community so they know what this ordinance does and what it does not do. So that's my two cents.
Jason, you want to talk a little bit about your experience with this issue?
Welcome up. So Councilmember Gabby, I really appreciate the chance to speak a little bit about this and also talk about this specific individual. I did go through and talk with this person three or four emails, eventually leading the person right to the actual ordinance under consideration to prove that nothing had changed. We've had the statement about what this ordinance requires or changes or doesn't change on our website for three weeks. We reached out to every single person in that emails that originally lodged complaints based on the understanding that there'd be that. I have to say, I think sometimes people look at their phones, they see the topic and they're thinking, oh, my gosh, I've already made my decision. What's happening? I too do this, partly because I need glasses, but also because, you know, it's, we're time pressed. And, and I will say sort of in terms of the entire pool of roughly, I'm trying to recall, but maybe 130, 140 people I emailed, there were over the course of three or four weeks ahead of time, two or three people that needed me to go back and personally, through a series of emails, explain what the ordinance does and doesn't do. But
And those two people went on Nextdoor app.
And, 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 yeah, and I, you know, and there was also something on Tumwater Hill, I think, Facebook. And I think that may have actually been retracted when I spoke with one of them. So I, I'm not saying we caught every single person, but we did really, 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 with advice from colleagues, with advice from city administrator parks, try to ensure people at least understood what's in and not in the ordinance. And then some cases, I even went back and talked about what we were facing in the original decision with regard to the Supreme Court and the lack of clarity then, that then became more clear over time and then moved forward into this situation where we could have a discussion about how ordinance, the ordinances and the rules that apply. I'm sorry, maybe they're not ordinances, the rules that apply at the parks would now apply on every city property as maybe was intended in the first place.
Thank you. Because it is very easy for rumors to get started and go on social media. I'm surprised that they're not even here tonight because my expectation was the, the community were going to come here tonight because we were changing an ordinance and don't know what was that doing, we're allowing homelessness. And then I went to where the sources is like, oh, my God, this is where this is coming from. I don't do social media, but I have to go check and it was right there. So I know we've communicated to them in the past. I mean, it's always nice to do it multiple times because some people, you gotta keep telling them, send to Nova and run again because that's just how they understand. And so if you have the time, do it again.
We, we took the time and I agree that there, there is some of that. And I think I'd also like to just state that I, I see the city here carrying on many levels. There's two sides of this. One, clarifying the ordinance. And then I see my colleagues around the city, you know, donating to the food bank, having a huge pile of socks for October, working with communities, showing up at community events, mission and vocation driven. So I, I gotta say, I love that. Love that about the city. And in terms of this particular ordinance, the, the main goal here was for, at least in my area, was to clarify. And we spent a lot of time doing that. So.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Back to your regular scheduled meeting.
Any other questions or comments? Was that, was that your presentation, Chuck, or am I?
I think it was. Yeah, if you, if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to, to try to address them or find someone else in the room to do it. But ultimately asking you to approve ordinance 02025-008, amending the Tumwater Municipal Code Section 12.32 for Tumwater Parks.
Councilmember Swarthout?
I'd like to make the motion to approve ordinance number 02025-008, amending Tumwater Municipal Code Section 12.32, public parks.
And I second that motion.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Althouser?
Thanks. Yeah, I, like I said earlier, I think I agree with like 90% of what's in here. Like, and even looking back to when we had the public hearings, I, I think like the common concern that we heard was like, it makes sense for us to align things across facilities. And that's the lion's share of what happens here. I think the thing that I do have pause about, I think just from a philosophical perspective, is the exclusionary letter portion of this. It just feels weird to me to have the ability to say that a public facility, that someone could be excluded from a public space. And I know that there's discretion built into this in terms of law enforcement and your role, Chuck, in terms of being able to issue those letters. It just sort of seems to me that that piece in particular, I, I do have some reservations about. Karen, some of the guidance that you mentioned, I think will be helpful and instructive, particularly if that can be introduced as like evidence before a hearing examiner in terms of what the goal of this policy actually is. But I do have reservations just from a philosophical perspective of being able to say that, you know, a public space like City Hall, that someone can be excluded from it based on a letter from a law enforcement officer as such. And I, I fully recognize too that it could be the case that maybe that's even more lenient than a civil penalty, right? Like, it could serve sort of as a warning of sorts. If you look at it from a systemic perspective of maybe someone gets a letter and then there was a violation and then, you know, then that also triggers the civil liability, either from the exclusionary letter or for underlying civil liability. Like, maybe that could be viewed as sort of a ramp up. But philosophically, I, I think I have reservations about that piece. If we vote on this tonight, I think I'll still vote for it. But I, as a, as a citizen, as this unfolds and no longer a council member at that point in time, I think I'll be monitoring it to make sure that, you know, that, that guidance is, is through and is issued to the point that we make sure that it's narrow and as specific as possible and builds in proper discretion for the hearing examiner to be able to take extenuating circumstances into account beyond just evidentiary levels of preponderance of the evidence.
Any other questions? I see Karen paying attention to that, so I'm sure she'll probably give good guidance.
And I just want to say I'm voting in favor of this and I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Althouser. I appreciate your conscience and your, your, your legal ability to bring out things that for us to consider as well. And I appreciate that. For me, the ordinance cleans things up, just makes things clear that it was not clear before and it made, it was difficult for our, our law enforcement to. And so this does make, makes it clear and as far as like events and city property, that it's all the same thing. And so it, it just clarifies it for everyone. So I appreciate this, that I think it was a cleanup bill. So thank you, or ordinance. So thank you for that.
Any other comments before I call for the vote?
I have a comment.
Okay, Councilmember, I don't see your camera, so I didn't recognize you being there.
I know, I don't know where it went.
There we go. It was a second there. It was a second.
Wait.
There you go. There you go.
I agree with Michael. The thing that concerns me is what? Is anything with this ending up with the, you know, examiner and so forth, are things gonna be held against that person? I mean, does this get, does this get registered somewhere? Or does this get, a name get entered in anything? Or is it just us as Tumwater trying to protect our property and public places?
It is the latter. Karen has indicated, was shaking her head, no, this is not anything that is registered or identified or publicized. Councilmember Althouser talked a little bit about, you know, maybe this is, maybe this is a step prior to the civil infraction and that is indeed the purpose for the exclusionary letter is that it is something short of an actual infraction. So it's a way in which we are able to, it gives us another tool and a lower level of, of enforcement capability rather than jumping immediately to some sort of a civil infraction for something that may not need that level of enforcement.
So this person, is there a certain length of time on, on this communication to a person or a family? I mean, I guess if you found a whole family on property that they, they are excluded. I think the example was of coming to City Hall. Is there a time limit that they cannot do certain, go certain places?
So to clarify, this wouldn't have any criminal ramifications. This doesn't go on any kind of criminal record or anything like that. And yes, you, in the, in the code currently, if a violator has not been excluded previously, the enforcement officer may exclude the violator from the property for a period not to exceed seven days.
How many days?
Seven.
Seven.
And then if they have been the subject of a prior exclusion within one year of the current violation, the exclusion can be for a period not to exceed 90 days.
From any exclusion from any city property, not just where they were found?
It, it has to be the violation of, of one of these rules. And then, yes, it would, the, the letter that would be issued would indicate what, what the violation was, what the period of exclusion is and, and specify the details. And that's what I was saying, we could develop some templates that we'd be using going forward for these potential exclusions, particularly if they were with respect to City Hall, which previously has not been covered by these rules. And then in addition, what's new about this is the, the hearing procedural pieces. But the exclusion letter is not new to, to this ordinance and the, and the rules.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Councilmember Althouser?
I, I was just gonna clarify to make sure I, I understand. Because Councilmember Kathy, I think you, what you're sort of getting at is like, if someone gets issued an exclusionary letter, will it haunt them if they apply for housing in the future or a job where they're working unsupervised with children or vulnerable adults where you're typically subject to background checks? I assume, not to put words in your mouth, but I think that's what you're trying to get at. And I agree for like a criminal background check, none of this would ever come up. But for a broader background check, civil records can be a portion of a background check, correct, Karen? Like, if someone, if someone does a background check to pull all court records and someone has a civil violation, that would occur. It's just on a criminal background check. This would not appear because there's no criminal liability being imputed.
It's, I, I won't say it's not, I mean, that it's impossible that this would come up, but this would never be filed in court. You know, at most, it would be filed in front of our hearing examiner.
Okay.
All right. Any more discussion or questions? Okay, with that, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Any sustaining? All right, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Last item on our considerations is Resolution Number R 2025-014, City of Tumwater Strategic Plan and City Administrator Parks.
Disappeared. Yes, please. Thank you.
Did somebody walk off with a clicker?
The, the clicker has disappeared.
Oh.
There we go. Thank you. Yes, so we are before you this evening, asking for your consideration of adopting the resolution that would adopt the updated City of Tumwater Strategic Plan. So our strategic plan is a big picture document that helps to direct the efforts and the resources of staff, of our budgets. It helps to provide transparent communication with our community about what the city council has determined to be important priorities for our work. And it is intended to help prioritize all of the work that city staff works towards on a regular basis, not just the things that we're obligated and mandated to do, but the other optional things like an FD cares program or a crisis response program or a lot of our parks and recreational programming. So this is a document that is intended to identify those goals and prioritize them and, and provide a way in which the community can understand what the city council is thinking in terms of priorities. It's also a way for staff to prepare budgets. And it's also a way for staff to report back to the city council on these different priorities that you have for our work. We have identified the six focus areas that you see here. These are consistent with what were the previous strategic priorities in our most recently adopted and applicable document that was called Strategic Priorities and Goals. We have different action items within each of these focus areas that are assigned to either a single department, but in most cases, multiple departments working collaboratively to ensure that the action items that bring the focus area goals to reality. Each of those action items will all Each of those action items will also have an annual work plan, which will have very specific tasks that will be able to be accomplished in that particular year. And it will allow then the departments to structure and organize their work, and then again, provide an update and a report back to the council on the progress that we're making towards meeting the expectations of the focus area goals and the goal statement, as well as the various action items. The resolution itself is a document that identifies all of the reasons we are undertaking this strategic plan. It very clearly identifies the commitment that the organization has in adopting this strategic plan to realizing our vision, mission, and living by our values. And it is, again, emphasizes and identifies what the strategic focus areas are. The body of the ordinance, excuse me, the resolution essentially adopts the strategic plan. It obligates the city administrator and therefore your staff to implement the various components of the strategic plan. It also asks for regular monitoring and reporting, and it does indicate that there is a plan that each each, that this document will be a living document. It is intended to be fully and completely updated every six years. Every two years, there's a distinct and specific intentional review of the action items. And as I mentioned, every single year, there will be a development of annual work plans that also then provide a reporting mechanism for staff back to the city council. So our request is that you approve Resolution R 2025 dash zero one four, adopting the 2026 2032 Tumwater Strategic Plan. I'm happy to answer, any questions?
Any questions? This has been a multiple months of work, so. So do I hear a motion to approve?
I've been leading the motions tonight, so I might as well just keep doing it. Here we go. I move to adopt Resolution R 2025 dash zero one four, adopting the Tumwater Strategic Plan 2026 through 2032.
So we're in the motion. Do you want questions after Councilmember Kathy and Councilmember Alt hauser? Do you want questions now or after the motion?
I was gonna, I raised my hand to speak to the motion, so after someone's seconds.
Okay.
Comments?
Do I have a second?
We, yes, we do need a second first.
Yeah, any second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember, or yes, by Councilmember Swarthout, second by Councilmember Alt hauser. I'm sorry. Agabi, I'm telling you, it's been a long day. So with that, I have an order, by the way, the hands came up, so I'll just go by that. So Councilmember Kathy first, then Councilmember Alt hauser. Councilmember Kathy?
Well, I thought this was a very long process, and I thought it was well done. And I just wanted to commend, you know, I mean, the work that went into this is obvious, I think, by by what we've come up with. Whether we touched on everything everybody wanted, or we got it down on paper or whatever, I think the, somehow the process of doing it was was helpful. It was it in the process. I mean, I've been here a long time, and I learned new things about people I already knew and how they responded to to questions or responded to what direction we were headed or so forth. So I thought this was an exercise in in good governance here. And if we can, if we can, you know, live by some of these things and accomplish what we need to in the next few years, I just want to thank all of the staff and the people who participated. That was another thing I liked, how much staff interaction that we had in this process. So thank you to everybody who's been part of it, and my councilmates. I think it's been a while since we've done something this big. So that was what I would like to say.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Alt hauser?
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Kathy took some of the words right out of my mouth. I just wanted to recognize all the all the good work that went into this. They really sort of dedicated that kind of time and effort to be forward thinking in in a little while. And I think that just sort of demonstrating the initiative to to do this, and so that the public can kind of see the direction that we envision in a very clear way, especially alongside all the work for the plan that will be adopted early next year, I think is a very important step that we're taking. So I'll be happy to vote in favor of it in a few moments. Thank you.
Councilmember Swarthout?
I want to compliment how beautiful it is. The report is visually beautiful. It's it's really pretty to look at. And when when you, when you look at other people's plans online, would you, that I just want to commend you, that it's it's pretty. It's very, it's very easy to follow, and it's very attractive. Excellent job, and it's just, it's very thorough. And I commend, I wasn't able to go to all the sessions, but I want to commend my council seatmates, all the work that you put into this and all the staff as well. This was, this was one of the biggest things we've done, and and I commend all of you for the work that was done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments before I call for the vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yes, this has been a long process and has taken a multitude of hours, commitment, and so I think this will be very, a very good document moving forward, so. All right, so that is all we have under the consideration, council considerations. And now we'll go to committee reports, and the very first one is Public Health and Safety and Councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. So we did meet in November because of the holiday, but we are meeting on December 9th. And for discussion, I said two agenda items, and one is to talk about the TT remodel update. And then I, we did talk a little bit about the, when we talked about the homelessness issue and having somebody come to talk to the, to the Public and Safety Committee, we have teed up somebody that would give us at least some sort of information about, not necessarily better availability, but at least resources that are available within Tustin, uh, within Tumwater that are putting crisis can get themselves into. So that is going to be happening on December 9th. That's my report.
Great, thank you. General Government Committee, Councilmember Alt hauser.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee met on November 12th. I have been out of town, so I did not actually attend this meeting, but it is my understanding that the discussion of the comp plan still took place, and that as a full council and a body, we'll be reviewing that work in the coming weeks.
Great, thank you. Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout?
Public Works and Safety, or Public Works and Safety, where did that come from? Where did that come from? I'm late. Okay, so.
We're all having a issue tonight.
Public Works will be meeting on Thursday, November 20th. And on our agenda is a service provider agreement with Fair and Peers for vehicle miles travel gap analysis. Technical Services Agreement with King County for regional collaboration for better resilience outcomes in the Puget Sound Basin. Service Provider Agreement with Corello Engineers for the 2025 sanitary sewer comprehensive plan update. Ordinance Number Zero 2025 dash zero one five Amendment for X Street, Resolution Number R 2025 zero two zero for the Craft District Development Agreement Amendment Number Four. We'll see you at eight o'clock on Thursday.
Great, thank you. Budget and Finance Committee has not met since our last committee, and the next one is canceled due to it being on Thanksgiving. So now we will go to Mayor City Administrator Report, and we will start out with City Administrator Parks.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate that GIS Day is tomorrow from four to six. That's the public, public available activity that our GIS team is going to be providing to the community. It sounds like a lot of fun. They're actually going to be in several different locations during the day, actually doing fun activities with our staff as well. So really appreciate their innovation, and they really have a lot of fun doing mapping. So that's great. I wanted to also reiterate, this October final counts we're in, so this is a Tumwater City Employee Challenge, essentially. And it is the Black Hills High School Interact Rotary Club, as well as Together and Family Support Center. We, the challenge becomes basically from the Water Resources and Sustainability Department, how many socks can each department bring in? They gave us a break, those of us in our small little departments, they gave us a break this year and and added a bunch of us together so that we could actually pool our resources. We actually had 1,613 pairs of socks that were delivered to the the places that I mentioned. I would also point out that we do have a food drive going on. There is also a challenge involved with that as well amongst the bargaining, collective bargaining unit members, as well as the nonrepresented employees. And so we are gathering food in the lobby as an, and if you'd like to, you could contribute, because that would be then a contribution to the nonrepresented employee group, and we would then be in a, in an advantageous, advantageous position. We are also going to be working on that food drive and promoting the food drive as part of our Christmas tree lighting, which happens on Saturday, December 6th. And we will also be accepting donations at our Santa stops, which occur in early December. And then just a brief update for you, a reminder about your upcoming council meetings. There are several committee meetings that are happening in the rest of November and December. Public Works this Thursday, Public Works on December 4th, which is the Thursday after our meeting on December 2nd, Public Health and Safety on the 9th. Currently, there are no agenda items on the December 10th General Government Committee meeting, nor are there currently any items on the December 18th Public Works Committee meeting, so stay tuned. We try not to cancel those meetings too far in advance, just in case something comes up. But for right now, it appears that those will not occur. In terms of our regular council meetings and work sessions, there is a work session next Tuesday, the 25th, the regular meeting on Tuesday, December 2nd. And then on Tuesday, December 9th, that is your joint work session with the Planning Commission. So it actually starts at 6:00. We will have the big table again set up here in council chambers, so hopefully some of you will be able to attend in person along with the Planning Commission members. Currently, there isn't anything on the, after the council's work session agenda after that joint session, but you will likely have a lengthy conversation with the Planning Commission. There's, I think, three separate items, including a discussion of the 2026 Long Range Planning Work Plan, which is always a great conversation. And then lastly, the Tuesday, December 16th meeting, regular council meeting, likely to be the last meeting of the year. We want to invite you to come at 6:00 on that night. We are planning a reception to express our thanks to both Councilmember Alt hauser, as well as Mayor Sullivan, prior to the regular meeting. And then, just as a reminder, I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, we need every council member here on that night in order to assist with consideration of some of the ordinances that we are asking for your consideration on related to the comprehensive plan and the development regulation ordinances. So please let us know if you absolutely cannot be here on the 16th, but just wanted to give you that reminder. And then lastly, we are closed next week on both Thursday and Friday for the holiday, the Thanksgiving holiday. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So for mine, I will have the EDC meeting tomorrow, tomorrow at noon, so we will have that meeting. Otherwise, I have not attended any other meetings. And now I will turn it over to council reports. So let me start out in Zoom land with Councilmember Jefferson.
I attended one T-Hopes meeting last week, and our new coordinator was hired last Thursday, and we discussed environmental strategies and also a possibility of a hybrid and in-person meeting to meet Hallie, and that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Alt hauser?
Thanks, Mayor. I have been out of town, so I did not attend the most recent Regional Housing Council meeting, but I believe Councilmember Kathy attended that at the end of October. So hopefully, Councilmember Kathy, I don't mean to put you on the spot, though actually, come to think of it, you probably already reported on it on the last council meeting, so there's probably no report to be had for the Regional Housing Council. But we'll see.
What high mountain were you on?
What's that?
I say, you were not here for that meeting, and I just want to, were you going to call on me next, Mayor?
Yes, I was going to call on you next.
Okay, excuse me, I didn't mean to just jump in there. I figured I was the last one in Zoom land. I wanted to to comment to Councilmember Alt hauser, yes, I did attend that meeting, and I want to know, while I was in that meeting, what high mountain you were on?
Okay, I was I was on Tharong Law in Nepal, which is 17,700 feet in the air.
Whoa. Well, I was just down, you know, you know, in Tumwater, trying to do what you do so well, and I was, I I want to send out a big shout of gratitude, which I've done many times, for Brad, Brad Medrude. He is, he's an amazing person, and I know he's working really hard now, but he came to that meeting. I confirmed it wasn't because he didn't trust me, but he knew that there was plenty of things going on, and he might need to, you know, talk about them, and so he did. Yes, I did attend that meeting, and I can't find where I wrote down my notes. It must have been someplace in really scary territory or something, but I will, I will mention it and talk to you about it, Michael, what we talked about, and then if you want to bring it up at council next week, it'd be great. Or just talk to Brad, he knows what went on. But we missed you. And then I had two other meetings, all of this on the same day, mind you, that's why I can't find the notes. I had General Government, and then I had ORCA, and they, I don't want to take up a lot of time. So one of the, just, I want to mention one thing from the the Clean Air Agency, and that is that, you know, this is the time of year for outdoor burning issues in all of the counties. We represent five counties, and this is an issue everywhere. Often, the same people don't think it matters that they, you know, pile up all their leaves somewhere close to their neighbor's fence or something and burn them. And it's amazing to see the difference in the air quality when there's a lot of outdoor burning. So that was a big issue and ways for us to warn people, please do not, do not burn outside, you know, recycle your leaves, use them in your garden, but don't burn them on your property. The other part of ORCA was about wood stoves. This is another thing, and we've been fortunate every year to get grants, a grant for for wood stoves in trying to convert wood stoves to, you know, slowly moving away from using wood to pellets or electric or something, and have been very, very successful. And people, and I just want you to know, people in 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 this area in Thurston County have been receptive to making a change from have been receptive to making a change from from wood. And overall, we've, we've been doing well in our air quality. So that's good news. And especially now when a lot of of money for organizations like, you know, like in a Clean Air Authority comes from the federal government, which is, it doesn't much care right now about people's clean air. So our people are doing a great job. So that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Von Holt?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I have inner-city transit tomorrow, and that's it.
Okay, great. Uh, Councilmember Agabi?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, on the 10th of November, I attended, um, JASCOMA meeting. And I had the meeting, which was mostly, uh, to talk about our budget for twenty twenty-six. Uh, and we did talk a whole lot about that. And then, uh, December eighth or maybe third is when we are going to adopt that budget. And then, uh, it wasn't a very long meeting, but I, as we were about to leave, somebody introduced livestock issue into the equation. And I had to tell them, Tumwater, don't do livestock. So that's none of our problem. That's the county. Would we do livestock? We don't, exactly, so, anyhow, so. So, and that was, that was that discussion. And then, um, on November twelfth, I attended, uh, the, uh, Consultation Board meeting, which was a very, very good, uh, meeting, because we talked about lightweight services from, we imagine from downtown Olympia to Tacoma and beyond. But the problem with that is, it is just a concept. So it needs money, and money pays none. But if that was ever to become a team, it would, it would do good in this region. And then we also talked about the I-five Ma- Ma- Martins Road to Mount Road. There's going to be some kind of alignment in that area. And then we talked about the, um, Southwest, uh, Thurston County Trail Study that is ongoing. And then, uh, we talked about the, um, at that point in time, the recruitment was ongoing for the, um, TRPC director, and that person has been hired. So we did talk about that. And I think I'll let, uh, Councilmember Swarthout, uh, provide the details. So that's my, um, that's me. I'm done.
Great, thank you. So I will go to Councilmember Swarthout.
Well, thank you, and so I'll make a quick, we did, I was served on the committee, the interview committee for the TRPC's new, um, Executive Director, and we did meet on November seventh and spent the whole day in interviews, and it was quite a process. And three very well-qualified candidates, it was a very difficult decision. Uh, but we did select, um, Melissa Gertler, who is from Oregon. And she has twenty-five years in housing, transportation, and land use and community development with regional and local governments, and so she'll be joining us. Uh, apparently, we get to meet her, um, at our December fifth meeting, and then she's, she'll be moving up here. So, um, big shoes to fill with Mark Daly, but, uh, we're looking forward to meeting her. Yeah, it was a good day.
Great, thank you. All right, with no other business, and we are now past nine o'clock, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.